Look, big wish.
I'll share a big bag of wishes.
I wish everyone loved each other and...
Special meeting of the North Smithfield Town Council on June 24th. This call ordered at 6:45.
Why is this by all the spirit of council office concerning decisions of authority and responsibility?
For the reasons certified by the United States of America and the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, the good, justice, and law.
Next slide is roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, here.
Mrs. O'Hara, here.
Mr. Oshia.
There.
Mr. Swansky.
President.
Here. The next item on the agenda is a special order of action. We got to 2019, 2020, but we'll do it with the go by. Just take it in order. Unnecessarily line by line, but we'll pop on a guess. Starting on page 13. Just the rest of the piece.
Yeah, so we're doing expenditure.
We're doing, we're doing the expenditure. So as we go forward, we'll use the budget raised for policy reasons, the roll call itself. First item is I entertain a motion for the town council for a budget of $16,750. Is there a motion?
Sub move.
Motion by Mrs. Bottomoli, only there is a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara, discussion? I'm going to do the, if you want, under discussion, we can get the raise down, break it down. There's motion on the second for the town council with an amount of $16,750. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'll, I'll be going to know on that. I was, I knew that I was in a minority when that came off and I voted against the raise from town council. So I'll be going to know on that, does come forward.
Any other discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
No.
Mr. Swansky.
No.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Motion asked. Next item is approving court. An amount of $8,000. Is there a motion to approve?
Sub move, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, there is a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bottomoli, Mrs. O'Hara, any discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next category, town solicitor. An amount of $157,906. Is there a motion to approve?
Discussion, Mr. President, motion.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, there is a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bottomoli, discussion.
Mrs. Swansky. Mr. President, if we look at labor lawyers and arbitration, I believe the share will be contractual obligation discussions. And previously, we had, you could see that year 17 and 18, we overspent what was budgeted. This year, up until May 31st, we are under, but in anticipation of potential more legal expenses. I don't want to say the word, the big A word, arbitration, but it could be on the horizon. I'd make a motion to increase that $5,000 to $30,000.
Got a motion by Mrs. Swansky. Is there a second? Well, actually, we're, we're discussing the other. We're under discussion. I would, I would counter with that, Mrs. Swansky, is to take the extraordinary litigation that's at $40,000 and the labor lawyer arbitration at $25,000. And my recommendation would be just to flip those two numbers. Leave the bottom line the same, but flip those two line items, put 25 in extraordinary litigation and put 40 into the arbitration.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion.
That's good suggestion, Mr. President.
Any other discussion? So, going to look for a motion number. So we have a motion in the second. We want to make an amendment to the motion.
I'll withdraw my motion, Mr. President.
Motion has withdrawn.
I'll withdraw my second.
Yeah, the second has withdrawn. So now I'll entertain a motion for the town solicitor. Still an amount of $157,906 with the following change of extraordinary litigation becoming $25,000 and labor lawyer arbitration becoming $40,000. Sub move, Mr. President. Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second? By Mrs. O'Hara, any other discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next is municipal court. An amount of $38,000, I would entertain a motion.
Sub move, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bottomoli. Discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next, the administrator's office. An amount of $118,750. Is there a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Motion by Mrs. Bottomoli, is there a second?
Discussion, second, a discussion.
Second by Mrs. Swansky, discussion.
Mrs. Swansky. Mr. President, we know that pretty much everybody in town is overworked and underpaid. Those are what I'll say. By looking at the administrator's assistant salary, an increase of 17.64, she's not represented by you, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm cognizant of the effect that might have in labor negotiations. I think she deserves every penny of that. But I think it's a steep increase, I would have no problem increasing it 8.36%, which would be a $2,699 increase. Bring in the total payroll to $35,000 from 32 to 301.
So you have, you look to spread over two years, period, adding takes over two years, period.
Uh, no, I would just give it a boost right now to $35,000 for the year 2020.
Excuse me, Mr. Baden, did the, the, did our administrator's assistant, you know, last two years get any increase in pay during that time?
They did last year, a small increase, actually.
Thank you, it was provided the same rate that was provided to other increase, other clerks. I would remind the, the council that, you know, I think this community is disrespected, they have been struggling for a long, long time. By comparison across the state, it's, it is what it is. And I've said again and again, I don't care about the impact for me. But my assistant is the lowest paid clerk in the system, period. The lowest. And even with that increase, we'll, we'll continue to be so.
Uh, Mr. Administrator, I have no problem with that. I would auto approve this. I mean, I'll vote to approve this if we give the same consideration to the assistant town clerk. But you don't vote on that, so let's just, I'm actually saying that to my council members. So in essence, I would have no problem with the 38, as long as my council colleagues will consider this when we come to the assistant town clerk.
Um, I would like to, a separate issue within the same area. It looks like we used to have funding for a grant write-up.
Okay, here.
I'm sorry, it looks like we used to have funding for a grant write-up a few years back. I don't know if it makes sense to have, throw some additional money towards having a grant write-up. I know that it seems like there's opportunities out there.
We handle grant requests through the planner's office.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion for 118,750. And a second. No further discussion, any further discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next is the town clerk's office. An amount of $168,224. Is there a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Motion by Mrs. Bottomoli, is there a second?
Second, good discussion, Mr. President.
Second by Mrs. Swansky, under discussion.
Mr. President, uh, for this particular increase in pay for someone who's not represented by the union, we actually have objective measurable numbers of other communities. And we can see that North Smithfield, from the list provided to us, North Smithfield on this list is second from the bottom, the three full-time staff in the clerk's office. We have a population of 11,967. Current, uh, what's listed here for our assistant deputy secretary is $35,908. You go to the next line, the line above it, let's go to the line above it. Foster, three full-time, same amount of full-timers. The population is, I wouldn't say a third, but it's 4,606 people. That deputy salary is $38,000. That's another $2,000, I'm going to round it up, it's another $2,100. I agree with what the administrator said earlier, our folks are not respected. Retention, that's the 80/20 vote, because if we have to hire somebody else to come in, we're going to, just like we do with the planner, like we do with the tax assessor, the finance director. We give them a boost in pay, we just convince them what their duties are. I would like to see the deputy's salary increased to $41,000. It's not what was asked for by the department, but I think it'd be a reasonable increase.
I would, I would agree with you on that, that's actually what I had, was increase in that to $41,000 and not to jump too far ahead. But I'm looking at putting it in the same category as the assessor. A tax assessor and a taxpayer run the same thing with deputies behind them. And I think that both of those deputies, because it's not a job performance issue, it's a position that we're looking at. We're funding a position, not, not the person that's filling the position.
I agree.
So I think both of those deputies should be at the same pay level. So we get to that, we get to the assessor's thing, but I agree with the $41,000. So it would be an increase. And the department right now is $3,000 over what was, over what was recommended. Is there any other discussion? There are none, so we have a motion for 168,224. Would the maker of the motion amend it to increase that by $3,000?
That's a motion. Oh, sorry. Where are the motions?
Terry made the motion, Terry?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So you would amend your motion?
Yes, I will amend my second.
171, 224?
Yes.
On the second?
Second.
Second amend theirs as well? Any other discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next item is the planning division. I entertain a motion in the amount of $145,549. Sub move, Mr. President. Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Under discussion. Um, just, uh, no, I didn't have, my question was already answered. I, I, can, can, anyone else have anything?
I do have questions as far as the contracting services. I think I've asked this, but I'm not sure what it is we're doing because we haven't spent anything this year.
It's anticipation of need for surveying, particularly related to town roads and legal expenses, especially certain expenses. It's going to be related to you. We did spend, I think, $1,100 of that, that hasn't entered as yet, I guess, for a legal consultation on a very difficult roadway ownership circumstance. That's, you know, there are, there will be times when we don't use it, but there'll be a lot of others that we have.
Need something there when we do have some.
Exactly.
So currently, we have $1,400 remaining, and so after May 31st, is that correct?
I'm aware of a $1,100 bill that if it's not posted here, it should be soon, so I don't recall any other announcement.
Any other discussion? So motions for 145, 549, and a second, no further discussion, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next item is the board of canvassers. $5,620, I entertain a motion. So, motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bottomoli, Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next item is the finance department. In the amount of $236,12, there is a motion to approve.
Motion for your discussion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bottomoli, discussion.
Mrs. Swansky. Uh, I'm going to refer to, you said earlier that you had someone in finance, or was that? Oh, I said tax assessor. Okay, I'm good.
So another discussion?
Yep. That's not a question. The overtime. So the overtime doesn't appear in any other fiscal year, but this year, it isn't. Need a small, I'm really curious as to why it happened.
I have a, I don't know, it could be like here.
No, we, there unfortunately, there were issues again with the sound system. Superintendent's done the best he can with it, we are where we are.
Counselor, if you might, if you need to use your outside, please.
Yeah, I can talk louder. Yeah, so I just had a question about the overtime, just because it wasn't in any other prior fiscal year, and I see it's, it's in here for $500 with the adopted budget. But the budget committee recommended 2016, I'm just curious, what's causing it?
That's for the holidays that fall on the Monday. So what happens is she does it from home on Sunday and Saturday. So it's a payroll process. So there's a lot of Monday holidays that just happen to fall on payroll weeks, this come year.
Well, payroll still needs to get done, the process, so we do it in week.
We will be working on streamlining that, but meanwhile, we have to try for the overtime.
Any other discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next is the tax assessor's office. An amount of $123,978, is there a motion to approve?
Uh, motion, Mr. President, for your discussion.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bottomoli, Mr. Oshia. Under discussion, same issue, the deputy assessor. My recommendation is to put it at $41,000, so we would increase that by $5,000, so it will be on the same honor as the deputy clerk.
Commit to grace. Yep.
Any other discussion? Sub move.
I do have a question on the office supplies. Um, we're at 1794. We've never spent that much. So I'm just wondering why that number.
Next, roll call vote.
The 1794 number?
Mm-hmm.
We usually do spend that much, we haven't, don't have going yet. That's for the envelopes and the paper that we print.
Yeah, the years passed, it wasn't that high.
Right, two years passed, it still wasn't that high. This year, we're at 684, last year, it was 816. Prior year was 1311. So I don't know how we got 17.
I'm doing a good miss of that. Not the most determined.
So if you feel that we should reduce it, we can. Um, it's just, I'm newer to the office, I don't want to end up overspending anything. Okay? So.
You have a recommendation?
I recommend we just go to 1500.
So we have a motion for 123,978. Add a thousand, so we're going to take out 294. Maybe there's a new total, 124,84, this is the maker of the motion, Mrs. Swansky. 684? 124, 684? So the maker of the motion amend that to be 124, 684?
Uh, so I'm going to roll call. I'll make that one, Mr. President. That's a motion, where you end it. Yeah, I'll make that one, it's all over, okay? Okay.
So second. Second, we draw the motion, roll call. So now I'll entertain a motion for 124,684.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve 124,684 to the tax assessor's office. That's reflective of a $1,000 raised to the deputy assessor and a reduction in the office supplies of roughly $294, making it $1,500 for office supplies. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oshia, Mrs. O'Hara. Any other discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next is the taxpayer's office in the amount of $18,603. Is there a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Motion by Mrs. Bottomoli, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, so you're looking at the budget raised for 98,603 for the taxpayer's office?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
All the numbers we have, everybody, I challenge. Any other discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next is the board of tax review, $1, is there a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Motion by Mrs. Bottomoli, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Swansky. Any discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next is board of computer service in the amount of $163,918.
Sub move.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bottomoli and Mrs. O'Hara. I do have a question, computer maintenance agreements. The last year was 47,905, and we, and today we spent 37,083, which I'm assuming we should be pretty much done with those agreements. And we're going up to 52, 325. I'm wondering, are there some agreements or maintenance agreements that, that are due coming online that we need to pay payroll?
No, it's just the usual increases on accounting software, the open software, they all increase any maintenance every year, unfortunately.
So is there a reason to increase it? We've been spending 37, is there a reason?
We have a couple of bills that just came in, that are going to be hitting June.
So we still have roughly $10,900, well, $10,800, oh, right. Are you saying that's going to land from May 31st, that bill's coming in?
We have a couple of bills that came in in June, but also we have, uh, Stephen has been working out a lot on our firewalls and nowhere and stuff like that. So if you notice the computer, the green is half gone up, but so has our safety for our systems. So we're doing a great job with that.
So if I understand correctly, you feel that a 9.23% increase is justified, is that correct?
Yes, I have a very tight advance.
Okay.
You have a very tight advance, but I'm still confident with that number.
Any other discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Next is the zoning board in the amount of $8,450. Is there a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bottomoli and Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next is the personnel board, $1,000, motion to approve?
Sub move.
Motion by Mrs. Bottomoli, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oshia. Any discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, yes.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
Yes.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Next is the conservation commission in the amount of $1,800.
Motion for discussion, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bottomoli, under discussion, Mrs. Swansky.
Uh, Mr. President, I think we're all aware of what the conservation commission provides to this town. It's pretty much managed by volunteers and people that are appointed to the board, people that will help them. Under state statute, that's one of the few commissions in town that has to exist. The ladies and gentlemen that run the conservation commission, who volunteer their time to mow, weed whack, trim back dead trees, uh, I'm going to make a motion to increase that budget from $1,800 to $2,600. They're taking money out of their own pocket to do a lot of these maintenance efforts. I have to say, if this fell on the back of the town public works to do, then those folks would have to come up and do it. So I think with 26 and additional $800, it would give the conservation commission a little wiggle room to bring in professionals. And so they don't get injured doing some of these things. That's a motion for $2,600.
Is there any other discussion? So the, you said 2,600, so that extra money is going to what, it's like loan loaning and stuff like that?
To save them from taking money out of their pockets and whatnot. They, they, they do a lot of stuff, they don't even put it.
But how come they just don't put that in the budget? That's what I'm curious.
Because they've never been received favorably, councilman.
Um, okay. I'm going to vote no, let's just, I'm going to keep it, I recommend we keep it at the 18, maybe increase it to 2. I just went out knowing where that money was going, it would be easier if it was itemized and we could see it, but.
I think the service they do is something you can't itemize, it's as they go along and find problems that exist. And I don't think 26 is enough, I'd keep it all higher. These people have been using their own resources for years, and it's about time that they support them.
Yeah, it's just hard to justify jumping that much when they haven't got over 16.
I just told you why I think it's justified.
I think, I think that every board and commission that serves this town would be justified to come to us for more money as they reach out of their pocket. I know just myself, on, on the building task force, what it costs me for time, paper, printing. We don't submit anything. I understand, I understand your concerns, but every board and commission goes through that, budget committee, they will all do that.
Mr. President, it's a different thing to sit in front of a keyboard and put together a budget or go over numbers. It's far different to walk out through the swamps and carry equipment and trim back. That, that's a safety hazard, Mr. President, that's not sitting at your, your office on your spare time. That's going out and actually being in the field. So that's why I kind of like where Mrs. O'Hara was, Council O'Hara was going, because I, I thought 26, big man. If we get 22, it'd be a good win, but Miss O'Hara thought that 26 was not enough.
Look around, it's visible what they said, what they do. They never complain, and I'm telling you, a lot of it is coming out of, up this town and out of their own pockets.
Definitely.
Um, I, I did this. What is the type of motion?
No. Not this budget.
There's a motion and a second for $1,800, the maker of the motion wants to withdraw it?
Uh, yes, the maker wants to withdraw his motion.
Second withdraw?
Yes. The second withdraws.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to award, under Council O'Hara's recommendation, award the conservation commission $3,000 so that it can continue to provide services to the town.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky for $3,000 for the conservation commission, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any other discussion? There are none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Bottomoli, no.
Mrs. O'Hara, yes.
Mr. Oshia.
No.
Mr. Swansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
No.
Mr. President, I'd like to come back to my initial motion to award, not award, to allocate twenty-six hundred dollars to the Conservation Commission.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky for twenty-six hundred dollars to the Conservation Commission, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Harry Dunn, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barboli?
No.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
No.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
No. Is there any other motion on the Conservation Commission? I would like to make a motion until we keep it at the eighteen hundred.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. O'Gier at eighteen hundred dollars for Conservation Commission, second by Mrs. Barboli. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Really is with a heavy heart, I'll vote to accept that eighteen hundred, but I think we're doing a great disservice to the Conservation Commission.
So moved. Any other discussion? Yeah, I mean, just, just so everyone knows, you can see it up there, they requested two thousand dollars last year pending some major four-hundred-dollar bill. I don't foresee them really claiming that much, so if they go to three thousand, twenty-six hundred, it's just a big stretch. So I think the eighteen hundred is more than-
Well, again, this is as of May thirty-first, Councilor, I don't know if they've had any other expenditures-
Right, that's what I'm saying, pending anything, but it doesn't look like they're spending more than that.
But, but think about, if you're a Conservation Commission member and you know that, well, it's eighteen hundred, why, why might I argue on this point?
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barboli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next is the Historic District Commission, the amount of two-hundred fifty dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara and Mrs. O'Gier. Any discussion? Harry Dunn, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barboli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next is the Housing Authority, one dollar. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Barboli and Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Harry Dunn, roll call vote. All's in favor, or I should say, roll call, it's all good.
Mrs. Barboli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next is the Economic Development Commission in the amount of five hundred dollars, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Barboli, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Swansky. Any discussion? Harry Dunn, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barboli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next is the Public Safety Commission in the amount of one dollar, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Barboli. Any discussion? Harry Dunn, roll call vote.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next is the Budget Committee in the amount of one dollar, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Harry Dunn, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barboli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next is the Juvenile Hearing Board in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Harry Dunn, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barboli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next is the Town Hall in the amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Savilewicz.
Discussion.
Second by Mrs. Swansky, any discussion?
Mrs. Swansky. We, we may have discussed this in my memory, it's serving me, we, we're pulling up one-hundred forty-four thousand, is that participating to move? Or what is that, why is that going so much? Hundred forty-four? Hundred forty-four percent.
I believe most of that is the twenty thousand, the community janitorial, I did have that highlighted to get more information on that.
That's a shift of burden from DDW to this budget, recognizing that the, um, new building must water, um, and it's our intention to, my intention to do an outside service for it.
Any other discussion? Um, yeah, just, does it happen if cow was a fall, if what account that was falling? Or it's a new one? Any other discussion? The motion for thirty-four to eighty-two and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Barboli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next lady is plant operations in the amount of two-hundred nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Barboli, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Swansky, discussion? Under discussion. Clean janitorial, the annexed, all of the same, same parameters?
Yes.
That's the first question. Let's bundle the next one. Heat electric in a town hall in the amount of four thousand, eleven thousand, in two-hundred fifty dollars. Since we're vacating town hall, there's a reason that we, that we're allocating those money, those funds. Roll call.
Our experience in, uh, taking over Kennel Dean has taught us to watch out for, you know, what's coming next. We do expect to build these savings, uh, over the current operation. We really don't know how much. We, until the decision is made as to what we do with that building, I do expect to see it continue to be used. So we'll have to, you know, keep heat on, building lights. Uh, we'll be eliminating the security service, um, because the, well, we're on, on edge right now with, with, uh, the State Fire Marshal's Office, but rather not the security service, the fire alarm, park system, um, because that's not applying to code. So we're, you know, this year's going to be a discovery year as to what all these things come down to, uh, how efficient the new town hall is versus what it's been, and after loaded with more people. So, um, we are, um, we're guessing here with what we have.
So my, my next question then is, we have nineteen thousand, three twenty-three in Kennel Dean utilities. So after hearing that, my guess would be that we're gonna have to combine those two possibly, because we don't know what all those true numbers will be, will be in town halls or at least the pretty first of October. It's not going to be just like on Friday, we pack up on Monday, we're ready for the building, I know that, it's going to be, you know, a stage transition, more than likely. So it's our best guess that we'll leave, we'll leave, we'll lease some of those funds in the new buildings. And my last question on that one is, power utilities at thirty-seven thousand, five fifty-six.
That's the same thing. I mean, we do expect to, uh, once both the building, uh, being in care and control, the school apartment until August, when, uh, certain that it's not needed in September, uh, although, you know, I don't want to cause any concern, because everything does look like it's going that way. Uh, but, you know, we're making sure that we have rooms for students on the first day of school, um, in a cooperative manner. After that, what happens? You know, I, I do believe that they'll be interested in using the cafeteria. I expect that we're going to be, um, tasked with blowing the, the plumbing lines up in many of the buildings, and, you know, shutting them down.
Rising construction.
Exactly. Uh, so again, we're, we're in a circumstance, some of that may actually be, you know, protection of the facilities as we-
As their immunity, have their aid or what to do with it.
There will be a security system being installed, part of the bond money that we're working on with the school apartment. Um, you know, the bond required that it either be demolished or secured. The security measure that we're going to be taking is a camera system, uh, that will be monitored, uh, twenty-four seven, uh, until we make a decision as a community that there is nothing else to be done with, and we find money to be able to deal with the demolition service.
So how are utilities, is, is a, is a, is a big target?
Utilities are broad word.
Any other discussion on that? There's a motion and a second for two-hundred nineteen thousand, eight eighty-nine, is there a discussion, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barboli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next is printing and advertising in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Barboli and Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Harry Dunn, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barboli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next lady is contingency fund in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by, motion by Mrs. Barboli, is there a second?
Uh, second, discussion.
Second by Mrs. Swansky, any discussion?
Uh, little primer for me, if you could refresh my memory. Uh, the last audit we have, are we, what is it, twelve percent? We have, if you can, twelve percent of budget, is that correct?
Yes, while our fund balance, um, is, uh, to be, by ordinance, maintained between twelve and sixteen percent of the, uh, total budget.
So if we were to take the fund balance restoration contingency, this forty-five thousand dollars now, the last year was two-hundred fifty thousand dollars was approved. If we were to take the forty-five thousand dollars, would that have a negative effect if we were to allocate that or earmark that for, say, road replacement, road improvement? Because then my next question will be, if I'm following this, next question will be, um, what's happening fiscally in two thousand nineteen? I see fund balance restoration contingency, two-hundred fifty thousand dollars. What do we do with that?
Well, your credit and ours, we, we have done nothing with it, uh, which was the objective, um, today and always, is to not spend that money. It's there in the event that, um, you know, something goes upside down, the, the number is, um, at two-hundred and fifty, certainly not, it's a half a percent basically. Uh, it's not a, a big number in a budget the size of this community's. Frankly, this number of forty-five thousand dollars is, um, radically small, simply because of the, um, the budget condition that we have. We combined the terms, you know, contingency and fund balance, um, I guess, two years ago, on the basis that that's where this money can go. We are at, we're, we're above the twelve percent, we're not at sixteen percent. But I think the primary purpose here, Councilman, is not, uh, fund balance, it's just, uh, budget sustenance, uh, in the event of something surprising. I would encourage you to keep that, that line, I'd like it to be higher.
I, I know for years that we weren't under double-digit fund balance, we were down seven, eight, nine, so you've done a great job getting us up there. But I want to know what the impact would be if we were to take that two-hundred fifty thousand dollars and apply it, how many literate feet of roads could be improved in the town? So I would like to see that money, if I'm following you correctly, Mr. Administrator, as our last audit in two thousand and eighteen, we were above twelve percent. Nineteen, we haven't done, I'm just curious, I would like to see that two-hundred fifty thousand rolled into our road repair.
Well, that's a discussion for, um, when we close the budget year and make reservations, um, so, you know, you can hold that vote.
Yeah, uh, so then, if I vote to approve this forty-five thousand for the year twenty-twenty, I don't know, I'd just rather see it right now get earmarked, I, I know it's a drop in bucket, uh, compared to what we need for road repair. And then at the end of the year, when we close out, we can certainly take a look at that two-fifty, so we're talking about two-ninety-five. That could get some footage done on some of our roads, which we need desperately, so I'm not going to be voting. Yeah, I'll vote to approve that forty-five thousand, but later on, I'm going to look at it to back it up for road repair.
I think the number's too low at forty-five. I think there's, there's, there's a lot of things out there that cause contingency that it's, it's a low number that I think we're going to end up eating it, we're going to end up beating that amount here, whether we go through the budget year, I really do. I don't know what number to put in there, whether we double it, but I think it is too low number, to be honest with you. With, with the budget that we have, and all of the things that we have in play, and that's the contingency that we're carrying, is forty-five dollars, it's not enough.
Well, because we're over twelve percent, and then with this two-fifty, we don't know what the order of the figure's going to be for two thousand and nineteen. So forty-five, if, you know, I don't have a problem if you want to raise that, I want to see if, if we don't need, I want to see that come back to rule with it. At the end of the year. Yeah. But we certainly don't want to spend it because we have, and I, I'm really concerned about our roads.
Right. So there's a motion and a second, that's sixty-five thousand. I would ask the maker of the motion and the second, till we, till we draw, and we, we go back and revisit this as we go through the budget at the end, and see if we can add it, if we can do that, so. Does the maker of the motion and the second we draw?
I would draw my motion.
I would vote, yep.
And so we'll go back and revisit that, everyone will remember that. Next is Scottish Hall, three-two-hundred dollars, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Harry Dunn, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barboli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next is the North Fifty-Eighth Library, four-hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and two dollars, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion? Harry Dunn, roll call vote.
Mrs. Barboli?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Gier?
Yes.
Mr. Swansky?
Yes.
Mr. Vannen?
Yes. Next is the Police Department, the amount of two million, seven hundred forty thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion for discussion.
Motion by Mrs. Swansky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Gier, discussion, Mrs. Swansky.
Uh, Mr. President, I see it's probably going to be addressed to either Chief or Captain, whoever wishes, they can help me remember this. We work with dispatch, so we have more offices on the road, and if I'm looking at dispatch salary, maybe we didn't plan right for two thousand and nineteen, but we had eight, just going to round for sake, sake of rounding, eighty-three thousand, and then up until May thirty-first, a hundred and thirty-five. Department's looking for one eighty-five, uh, which is supported by the Administrator and Budget Committee, that's a hundred and twenty-one percent increase. Did we, uh, not budget correctly, Chief? No, but I'm just trying to figure this out.
If I may call to-
Do you have the answer?
My recommendation, my recollection is that you will be planning on half a year of dispatches, but we put the school resource offices on?
Got it, thank you.
Okay, can you go ahead and end early?
There.
That'll give a difference?
Yep, okay, I'm good. The other thing is, we moved down to OT, Police Officers OT.
On page seven?
Yeah. Page seven, right.
Holiday work overtime police?
I, I, I don't know if we were actually budgeting enough for this. If you look back, you can see that we budgeted, we've always been under budgeted. Currently, we have the, we have the department, right, we still probably asking for two hundred and seventy-five thousand, Administrator two hundred, Budget Committee two hundred. I don't know that it's enough, I certainly would suggest that we go to two fifty, just to add it to the budget in case we were in tomorrow overtime of eight. That was my discussion for that.
My discussion on the Police Department, holiday work overtime for police, budgeting eighty-nine thousand dollars for it. We spent fifty, and we spent forty-two. We spent forty-nine the year before that, so I'm thinking that is, we're overfunding that. And I would, I would suggest that we reduce it by thirty-six thousand dollars, become fifty-three. Fifty-three over two hundred. Comp time payout, the twenty-five. We spent thirteen, sixteen, and eight year to date. I would suggest that we reduce that by five thousand dollars. I M C software fees, we spent thirteen, fifteen, fifteen, budgeted twenty-eight. I recommend a reduction of ten thousand on that one item. I M C software fees. We didn't make those moves yet, so. They're just, this is what I'm, I'm covering. And then, on the community events, on the new account, there was four thousand dollars. And I know that the captain came in and explained about the explorer program, with about fifteen members, the total cost with fifteen members would be nineteen thousand dollars. I would recommend that we increase that by twelve thousand dollars to cover the equipment, the camp, the insurance, but not the uniforms, for that program. That would be, that would be how I would look at handling that.
So, Mr. President, if I'm following you correctly, you're talking about the community events.
Yep.
Uh, so, the department's looking for twenty, we have Administrator, we have the budget saying four thousand dollars, are you saying it was a twelve?
No, we're going to prove it, increase it by.
Twelve, since it's to sixteen.
To sixteen, okay. Twelve it would be for that explorer program, to pay for equipment, the camp, the insurance, but not the uniform. I don't know if we have control, but that would be, that's why I put that on.
I, I think we could get the community events up and running, if I can address this to Captain Lafferty. Captain, is it required that, if we stop this, is it required that they have uniforms for this first year of the late cadets?
Oh, it's just something that, of course, all the.
That's my point.
Have some sort of uniform, they still have t-shirt, give you as little as that, you want them to have some sort of.
Uniform, yeah.
My point, Paul, is that they can afford, they can buy the uniform.
How different?
No different than like voice scouts, where they buy their, their uniforms.
So this is what I understand.
But that's, that's usually what the explorer program's outfit there explores with, some sort of uniform. How intense and how expensive to get it depends on the program.
So, with sixteen, you'd be able to give uniforms to the cadets, get uniforms for them?
Yeah, I think.
Well, format, that's our.
Format was already for the program. Correct. And what would be, your answer, well, for total of sixteen, for them?
In the event that a young man or woman cannot afford their uniforms, is going to be any money available to help that individual out? Where, where would you get that from?
What?
Come and see us. I mean, you want them to pay for their uniforms. If they cannot pay for them, what do we do?
Well, if I was understanding, correctly, but wrong, if I was understanding the President right, he wanted to increase, uh, department's looking for twenty, we've had recommendations before and for, the President wanted to increase it by twelve to bring it to sixteen. Would that facilitate everybody getting a uniform? That was my question.
Well, that's not just for the explorer program, that twenty thousand dollars, that's for the community policing as well.
All right.
We incorporated the explorers into that lineup. I mean, you can pay for uniforms, but something else has to give.
All across the place, as you said.
Right. So, my question is, if they cannot afford to purchase their own uniform, is there a contingency plan for that?
Mr. Baden.
I guess I would say come and see us.
Pardon me?
I guess I would say come and see us, and see. I'd like to see the program up, but I just. At the fifteen, I just thought it was, it was, it was kind of a high, a high number that you have a tight budget. I mean, you sold, we did, with your other part of your budget, trying to find money elsewhere, but I, and I just, I just compared it to like voice scout program where there's a uniform out there that everybody wears, but they purchase, the individual purchases that uniform. It's set, this is what you wear, the insurance, the pants and all that. I would just prepare you for that, and if they want to be an explorer program, they can, they can have the uniform. In voice scouts, there are programs where if you can't afford the uniform, you can get one as well.
Chief, if there is truly someone in this town, and we've done this before, there are people that don't want their names known, we will provide that uniform. No child has ever failed to join because of something as real as a uniform. But when you want them all to feel the same, and no one knows about it, it just comes to you.
Chief, Troop Five, Smithfield Avenue congregation, I was a recipient of a Dorian's voice scout uniform, so. But I, I think there were, so, we'll, we'll measure.
We'll get it.
There, it was the same, we go along with it, yeah. Holiday work overtime police, reduce it by thirty-six thousand. Comp time payout, we reduce it by five thousand. I M C software fees, we reduce it by ten thousand. Community events new account, increase it by twelve thousand. So, there's an deduction of thirty-nine thousand dollars, the Police Department.
I, you know, Mr. President, I was okay with the rest of that except for the OT for the Police Department. We can see that we overspent, historically, we've overspent by a great amount. The department's looking for two hundred and seventy-five thousand, we have recommendations from the Administrator and Budget Committee for two hundred thousand. Not supporting the difference, but I, I think the two hundred and fifty thousand would be an adequate amount for, it's not going to be adequate, we're not overspending. But I think two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be a little bit more prepared in planning for overtime needs for the twenty twenty. So I, I would like to see that be, we got two hundred and fifty thousand, not two hundred thousand, or certainly don't want to see that two hundred thousand reduced. I think that two hundred thousand is not enough, uh, for the history of overtime.
Would you take the other savings that I recommended, put it into that account, so it stays the same number?
Uh, yes, because in the end, you're going to be adding twelve thousand dollars to the three hundred event, which I'm very happy you made that discussion.
Doesn't change the bottom line. I don't completely agree that we put money into the overtime account, but we need to, we need to find a way to control it, that's what we need to. It's not, it's not an attack on the police department, it's just, we need to find a way to bring down the line so that we, it's affordable.
So we're going to have to grab the motion, uh, to it. We haven't enumerated, is it up there?
Every line, I don't know if it's been done, I understand that. So I'll make a motion that the holiday work overtime police account be reduced by thirty-six thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bonio. Any other discussion? No call vote.
This is bottom only.
Yes.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes. Make a motion that the comp time payout be reduced by five thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bonio. Any other discussion? No call vote.
This is bottom only.
Yes.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes. The I M C software fees, and the promotion that we reduce that account by ten thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bonio. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So, as of five thirty-one, it's fourteen-nine-seven-nine, what does, what does the monthly invoice look like? With twenty-one being up next year, we anticipate going up even more.
Captain, I would just.
I just want to put in the funding if I was on the tide.
You will be. That's what you know. Yeah. That's what you know.
You're, you're good.
We see if we bring it down to eighteen, we'll be underfunding it. We've never spent eighteen.
But I'm seeing.
I M C software fees.
Unfortunately, the name, it's I M C software fees, but it's not just I M C stuff in there, it's the other software that they have at the Police Department, including Office three sixty-five, any computer upgrades, or anything like that goes into that lineup.
I share a concern for the expense here, but the, the options for us are none. We're held hostage effectively by the software provider and the, the service provider at this point, even to the point that we can't get built in a timely fashion, and we can't stop anything. I mean, I, I, so, no one's more frustrated with, with this circumstance than I am, but I can tell you that I do expect that we're going to wind up needing this money. I also disagree with the, the choices you just made with the, the compensation side, because.
No control.
I can explain, you put a little more clarity to what the software system that we operate from the Police Department. It's, it's Tritech, it's a specific software company that about thirty-six and thirty-seven cities and towns use. It's integrated, we have information, it's all law enforcement based, fire also uses it in other states as well. Once we got into that system, and most of the other thirty-six or thirty-seven, I don't know the exact number, that utilize that software, like the town administrator stated, now you have that software, they do all the upgrades, and you have to pay annual fee to use their service. So, that amount of money is a projection to what you need to pay for maintenance fee for that software, for that. So it's a, it's a plus or minus, but it's a projection. But it's usually, you can tell me if I'm wrong, within a couple of hundred dollars of what the estimate should be. Not, not to bore you, but they looked into, the whole state looked into getting different software company, entirely that runs province to do it, it didn't work out this way.
Just one more point, I know you already voted on it, but those issues were contractual issues on holiday pay and comp time issues. Those are contractual obligations, just FYI.
So right now, we're in a discussion on the reduction of the software increases, I M C ten thousand.
Well, after hearing the Administrator and Chief, Captain, tell us that we need to be locked in twenty-eight thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Okay. I was, I was in motion.
Right, okay. And I want to lose sight of.
Second to the OT. The last, the last motion, I may, is, is to increase community events new account by twelve thousand dollars for the explorer program.
For a total of sixteen, right?
Right.
So, is that your motion?
I did, it's my second. Motion in the second by Mr. Zmanski.
Before we vote on the total, Mr. President, on this fund we've been having here.
We got, we got a vote on that.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion? No call vote.
This is bottom only.
Yes.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Mr. President, the overtime for the police, did we take a vote on that? I, I, did I make the motion for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Where were we on that?
We didn't give a quick, we don't, we're not in discussion, there was no motion made on that.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the police overtime to be two hundred and fifty thousand. Based on past histories of not projecting profit, not that the Police Department, they can't, it's going to happen if overtime's needed, but looking historically, I would like to see that increase from the proposals from the Administrator and Budget Committee, to make it two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is less than two seventy-five that the department's looking for.
The motion. There's a motion by Mr. Zmanski, is there a second? To increase the overtime for the police to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Second by Mr. O'Hara. Under discussion? I just don't think it's the right direction, though, I really don't.
So increasing it to two fifty, what's the bottom of the equation?
It affects FICA, it affects FICA, it affects the pension. When you change something in salary, it trickles down, just remember that, every man is, it changes the FICA, it changes their pension, it changes everything. So just keep that in mind. Now, only that, but we just won't, a dispatch and compacting department.
Okay, I think I'm following the FICA and everything else, but I also like to look historically where it has affected two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. And we still don't, I don't know what's in the pipeline from May thirty-first for additional overtime, but you can see that we adopted a budget of two hundred thousand, we're now at two hundred and eighty thousand for two thousand nineteen, and we still have a month, I don't know if anything's coming in on that. I still think that we should watch it two hundred and fifty, yes, it will affect those places.
My, Mr. President, I'll just simply say that the payroll, salary and payroll circumstance in the Police Department is a interesting challenge. The numbers that were in the budget that I offered and that were supported by the Budget Committee, I just want to say finally, were very, very, very carefully thought out and put together for the interest of the town. I discourage changes in any of those.
There's a motion to increase the overtime for the police, two hundred and fifty thousand, second. Any other discussion? No call vote.
This is bottom only.
No.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
No.
Mr. Zlansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
No. Any other changes that could be made to that?
I'll keep crying, Mr. President. Make a motion to increase the police overtime to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Motion by Mr. Zmanski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Hara, to increase the police overtime to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Any other discussion? Very none, no call vote.
This is bottom only.
No.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
No.
Mr. Zlansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
No. So we're back to the Police Department total budget. Is there a motion to approve? Two million, seven hundred and eleven dollars, two hundred, two million, seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty-one, how? Seven oh one? We decreased by thirty-six and five, and we added twelve. No, we didn't. So is there a motion for the Police Department to be two million, seven hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars?
I would just respectfully ask the council to reconsider the vote on the holiday pay and the comp time issue, because they, they both are contractual issues.
So, no, Chief. Is there a motion to approve? Two million, seven hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Seven.
Motion by Mr. Bonio, is there a second?
Discussion, second.
Second by Mr. Zmanski, discussion.
Uh, what's the impact of holiday, the chief just mentioned something about the impact, and it is contractual. I would, I'd like to ask the chief if he can expand on it. Chief, I, I know you were to the point, but I'm not processing, can you help me with that?
I think the Finance Director could probably address it better than I can, as far as, uh, the value.
We, when I calculate the holiday pay, that's the maximum that we're, we are obligated to pay. So because of the turnover, and the higher class officers leaving, and with the, I don't know how to say that, but with the patrolmen and the trainees coming in, it's less. Just happens to have been less in the last couple of years because of our turnover. But this is the maximum that we're obligated, I calculate it very carefully, and I agree with the chief. I, I, I'm comfortable with the eighty, eighty thousand, whatever I think there, that's the maximum I calculated by degree, eighty-nine thousand. That's all I can say, I mean, just the way the contract is read, is by holidays.
I can't see that up there, but. So, what was, what was, was there a vote, those changed on that?
Yeah. Reduced it by thirty-something thousands.
It was eighty-six, and they were increasing it to eighty-nine. Oh, we've only spent forty-nine, fifty, and forty-two. Where does the extra come from?
So like, it's eighty?
It doesn't get spent, it just goes, it goes into our restoration account at the end of the year.
Or a different lineup, it's not the.
Or on different. Yes. But that comes, that comes to you for your approval, obviously, so.
Right, perfect, Mr. President. Finance Director, so you, you agree with the chief, eighty-nine thousand, twenty dollars, is that correct?
I do.
Chief, yes, what you're going to need to.
I mean, that's the maximum that will be spent, I mean, I'm not going to say that's what's going to be spent, but that's what we're obligated to pay.
Yep.
If everybody was to take every holiday and every, the room full is that.
We got a motion in the second to approve that.
To approve what?
To, to decrease it by thirty-six. There was a motion in the second, did we vote? We voted on, we voted on, on, on three things, yeah. We actually voted on five things, but we haven't voted on the bottom line number yet.
Okay.
So we're still, we're still at the point, discussion under the bottom line number.
Okay, I was in the affirmative, the majority, the Florida to decrease, I'd like to reconsider that vote. That's a motion to reconsider.
A motion to reconsider the holiday work overtime for the police, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Hara. So the motion for holiday, holiday work overtime for police was to reduce it by thirty-six thousand dollars, that's a motion. Is there a second? We have to do the same motion.
Okay, second.
There's a motion in the second, to reduce that account by thirty-six thousand dollars.
Mr. President, what, you have to vote on the motion that you consider first.
Yes.
Before you get any motion on the other. If there's been a motion in second, are you considering, non-debatable motion, cause for roll call vote.
Roll call vote and on reconsideration.
Thank you.
This is bottom only.
Yes.
This is O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Ogier.
Yes.
Mr. Zlansky.
Yes.
Mr. Baden.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnette?
Yes.
Now we go back to the original motion, which was to reduce that line of holiday work overtime for police by thirty-six thousand dollars, or the motion to decrease that, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wlansky. Any other discussion? Mary Nunn, vote call, vote.
This is Van Muller?
Mr. President, just get a point of order, once you do order to reconsider any motion, is there any motion on that, on that line item could be made, not just a fine motion?
I thought you had to make the exact same motion.
The motion reconsidered reopened it. So now your motion is that, let me tap on the table. So I just want, you don't need to vote on that again. The reconsideration ultimately demonstrated the majority of the council wants to reconsider that item. So that makes it open again for discussion, whatever motion you want on that item, but I would say on the whole, on the agenda. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to follow the suggestion of finance director, department, the administrator, as well as the budget committee, in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, twenty dollars for holiday work overtime police.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any other discussion? Mary Nunn, vote call, vote.
This is Van Muller?
Yes.
This is O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Swilenski?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnette?
Yes.
The motions are fully funded, yes.
Mr. Swilenski?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnette?
Yes.
So now we actually add seven thousand dollars that at least we bought, of what was originally recognized. Now the number would be, and their motion to approve the police department, two million seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Mr. President, I respectfully request that we reopen the comp time issue as well.
Is there a motion to reconsider the comp time payout? No motion.
I'll make a motion to reconsider the comp time.
Motion to reconsider the comp time payout by Mr. O'Shea, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wlansky. Discussion? I don't have a discussion, just reconsider. Vote call, vote.
This is Van Muller?
Can I?
Really reconsidering?
Yes.
Reconsidering.
Yes, O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Swilenski?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnette?
Yes.
Who will be the player of the board, comp time payout?
So is this twenty-five thousand, is this the maximum? Again, or where does this look?
So yes, because we don't know what comp time rate is.
I'm going to be very honest, this just comes from the department head as a request.
It's an estimate.
It's an estimate. Gavin's an estimate.
Want to be the board's president?
It's a maximum that can be paid out twice a year.
Are there a motion from the board?
Mr. President, you know, we were all Clairvoyant, we worked at sixteen-hundred Pennsylvania Avenue, so we don't know what this is going to be.
Oh, my good ways, yeah, I wouldn't even be there.
Well, I'd serve my country. And I, it's not spent down, the thing is, taxes are going to be levied for it, and I get it, I mean, you know, people historically back, it's not been going down on the monitoring that two thousand eighteen was way over forecasted. But I'll make a motion to, at the department request, we have the administrator, and we also have the budget committee, propose budgets of twenty-five thousand dollars, so I will make a motion to approve twenty-five thousand dollars.
Motion by Mrs. Wlansky, there is a second. No second? I'll make a second. Second by Mr. O'Shea. Any other discussion? Mary Nunn, vote call, vote.
This is Van Muller?
Yes.
This is O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Swilenski?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnette?
No.
So now we have a new number, is there a motion for the police department, two million seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars?
So, Mr. President.
Motion by Mrs. Wlansky, there is a second.
Finance director?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Van Muller, some of the discussion, the reason I was adding that money for the Explorer program was because we were taking money from other places. I still believe the Explorer program, now we just spent more money than we did twenty twenty. Just be aware of that. We spent twelve thousand dollars more than we had, because we didn't take any savings. That was the whole point of that piece. So we're almost there. So there's a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Can we, may not be the most popular thing, but can we revisit the Explorer program, I too believe in it, or is there any other areas that we can further reduce, because it's been twelve thousand dollars more. I mean, it's a tough budget year, so I agree, I think it's hard to justify, but I don't know if we reduce that amount, half-fund it, I'm just curious.
There's a point of discussion, is there a motion and a second, point of discussion, you want to change something?
Make the motion to reconsider that item, that's what you want.
Yes.
Just make the motion to reconsider that you would argue.
Oh, we haven't voted on it yet.
On the twelve thousand.
Oh, yeah, but I'm saying, we were, right now, we're acting on a motion for, go to bottom line. We have a discussion of the bottom line number. Change this one forward. Vote call, vote.
This is Van Muller?
I have a question, community maintenance, so what is that?
That's communication maintenance, communication maintenance.
Oh, okay.
That line item, I can show you, yeah, it's for all communication matches radios. So if it's our console, if you just say someone spoke to Pepsi on, you did, I take that money out of that fund to appear to the council. We have a radio console, I mean, radio, so anything that has to do with our radio communication system, I use that line item to replace radios that's broken, short, batteries, as they expire, they go bad, they get recharged, they get destroyed sometimes, through, of course, a bar fight, have them fall out to the ground. So that's what I use that for. An estimated cost of the radio, a new one that is now, is up to date, is about forty-five thousand dollars. That's batteries, charger, shoulder mic, and radio, and all the software program.
So we haven't spent anything this year?
Oh, we have.
No, we haven't.
Communication maintenance, oh, that's, well, I have purchases through communication maintenance. They froze the budget, so I don't know what, at what point.
Two months, we have.
Excuse me?
Yeah, two weeks, we have.
I have POs to communication.
Do you do that?
Yeah, far behind.
Do we know how much that's for?
What's for?
Those POs, what?
Yeah, what, two radios, two, two.
How much?
I, off the top of my head, I think it was eight thousand something dollars. Eight thousand and something dollars, I don't know, I don't have the field. But that's what that account was for.
Captain, help me understand, was that part of your presentation the other night, when you talked about you purchased, you had ordered for, and then we're going to be looking at the rest of that capital budget, correct? So, yeah, I understand that you put bills in. Okay.
I mean, it really, it really was a tight budget, and I don't want to, I don't want to make it sound like, it's not important, but it was kind of like there was no hanging for care, like what we spent and what was budgeted, it was easy to see we were not spending that, too. The rest of it is a tight budget, you know, I've seen this budget, years, I've run budget committees, well, I don't know what else, I would just make it a comment that I was looking at increasing Explorer program, I'm still committed to it, at the rate I am, just, we didn't, we didn't reduce any of the budget, offset, that's all. So there's a motion and a second for two million seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. Any other discussion? Vote call, vote.
This is Van Muller?
Yes.
This is O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Swilenski?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnette?
Yes.
Next on the animal control, the amount of ninety-four thousand, nine hundred, ninety-one dollars, there are a motion?
So.
Motion by Mrs. Wlansky, there is a second.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Van Muller, any discussion? Mary Nunn, vote call, vote.
This is Van Muller?
Yes.
This is O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Swilenski?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnette?
Yes.
Next on the EMA, in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, there are a motion to approve.
So.
Motion by Mrs. Wlansky, there is a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara, under discussion, I look at the training line item, looking for fifty-five hundred, everybody's recommending, they were asking for fifty-nine, everyone's recommending fifty-five hundred, we've never spent close to that, we spent three, was a high one year, I would recommend that we leave it at three, reduce that line item with five hundred dollars. Make a motion to reduce that line item, training.
The training line is one hundred percent reimbursed. There's no cost to us, when you go to the revenue line, you'll see it, they offset.
There's no offset.
So if we don't spend it, we just don't get reimbursement.
Is that on any other line item here?
Just the EMA, the EMA director, the deputy, you get fifty percent, we say, and the training line, one hundred percent. So he, um.
What, we spent?
Right, he applies for grants, and for that, for this particular, he had the maximum trainings, fifty-five hundred. They spent, and then just get reimbursement.
Can we, can we get a word back, man?
Yes. It's actually on tours, the end of September, it's not officially on the numbers.
So there's a motion to approve twenty-four thousand, nine sixty-nine, and a second, any other discussion? Mary Nunn, vote call, vote.
This is Van Muller?
Yes.
This is O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Swilenski?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnette?
Yes.
Next slide is another, there's a fight department, in the amount of three million, thirty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Shea, there is a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara. Any discussion?
All right, just a quick question. I'm in favor of this, it's obvious, some of the delta, this one, a little deeper, uh, so the department's looking for two million nine eighty-two, what's this round up, two million nine hundred and eighty-three, and budget committee and the administrator have recommended three million thirty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three, so, for the record, I want to say that I'm on set, I'll vote for it.
There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Mary Nunn, vote call, vote.
This is Van Muller?
Yes.
This is O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Swilenski?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnette?
Yes.
Next slide is the hybrid rental, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and six dollars, there are a motion to approve. Motion by Mrs. Wlansky, there is a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Van Muller, discussion? Mary Nunn, vote call, vote.
This is Van Muller?
Yes.
This is O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Swilenski?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnette?
Yes.
Next slide is the inspection division, in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars, there are a motion to approve.
So.
Motion by Mrs. Wlansky, there is a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. O'Hara, any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Muller?
Um, we're looking at numbers for increasing the travel due to thirty-six hundred, where we've spent fifty this year, fifty the prior year, and forty the year before that. Where are we going?
That is a training program for the building official, building official, he's not participated in.
Okay.
Is it still in University of Massachusetts, is that what they go?
I don't recall.
They have to stay open, it's an expense.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I made the motion, we were discussing, office supplies are somewhat questionable. We can see that historically, it happened two thousand seventeen, we spent a lot of money on office supplies, twenty-nine, we had to adopt a budget, you know? So, but since then, it's kind of been way below, like, two years following, it's been way below. I don't know, I'd make a motion for fifteen hundred dollars on, on, on office supplies, from three thousand to fifteen hundred.
There's a motion to reduce office supplies in the inspection division to fifteen hundred dollars, there is a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Shea, Mrs. Van Muller, any other discussion?
President, I might believe that the detail for that is related to the motion.
Fair enough, fair enough, thanks, thanks, sir. Okay, maybe we draw the motion, do we have a motion and a second?
I have a draw.
Oh, we draw.
We go back to the original motion of one forty, one forty-eight, seven thirty-one, which already has a motion and a second, and we have a discussion, yeah, so, we, we just spent a full three dollars for the move.
They have to, they have to go to the third office, they, they guess, I mean, they're going to need a lot, so.
Office supply, my just paper.
Yeah, I got it.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? Mary Nunn, vote call, vote.
This is Van Muller?
Yes.
This is O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Swilenski?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnette?
Yes.
This is the DPW administration, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars, there are a motion to approve.
So.
Motion by Mrs. Wlansky, there is a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Van Muller, any discussion? Mary Nunn, vote call, vote.
This is Van Muller?
Yes.
This is O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Swilenski?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnette?
Yes.
Next slide is the highway department, in the amount of one million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars, there are a motion to approve.
So.
Motion by Mrs. Wlansky, second by Mrs. Van Muller, discussion? Under discussion, I look at fuel, I don't want to say we're not using it, we haven't, we haven't spent close to forty-four for a number of years, I know the gas is going down right now, but has changed tomorrow.
It's expensive loser.
Yeah, but I would still make the recommendation that we reduce that line item by four thousand dollars.